Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 2nd. In compliance with state law, city council's special and regular meeting, this meeting is being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. I'm now calling this meeting to order, and our first order of business is to give the oath of office to our newly appointed council member. Debbie, could we join you in the front?
I, Deborah Hartzoff.
I, Deborah Hartzoff.
Having been duly appointed to the office of the City of Covington City Council, solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duty of this office as prescribed by law and to the best of my ability, and that I will support and maintain the Constitution of the State of Washington and the United States of America.
And next, I do want to let everybody know that Jennifer, Councilmember Hartzehousen, is joining us virtually. She asked for approval, and I approved that earlier last week. And with that, Krista, I'll turn it over to you for roll call.
Here. Here. Here.
Your mic's not on.
Yeah, I can't hear Krista. I assume she said my name. I am present as Jennifer Hartzehousen.
Thank you. Councilmember Simomo.
I'm here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
I am here.
We have a quorum, your honor.
Thank you, Krista. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And... We have a special mic tonight besides Debbie coming on. Christina's birthday tonight. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Christina. Happy birthday to you.
That was so special. I'll do it. Seriously.
I make sure my birthday doesn't fall on the council meeting.
Can we do that with mine, too, please?
Nope. No. All right. Thank you all for that. Next up is approval of the agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight? Thanks, Regan. With that, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. We have public communication. Our first item of public communication is a quarterly update with the Covington Chamber of Commerce. Dana, welcome.
Is this on?
We need to move that back over.
I don't think it's on.
There you go.
Reminds me of the one at the Makers Market. Oh, there we go. Well, good evening, everybody. City Council, Mayor Wagner, and city staff, thank you for inviting me to give a quarterly update for the chamber. I always enjoy coming and telling you what we've been up to, and I also want to say I appreciate your support on a daily basis, not only for being one of our sponsors, but for attending our events, for volunteering, and for partnering with us on so many things. So, thank you for that.
Be cutting in and out.
Can I just speak louder? Is that better?
Yep.
So, we have been very, very busy. If you have been telling our Facebook page.
Okay. I will try. So, as you know, we have been very, very busy, so I'm just going to go through some of our more recent activities and then a few things that are coming up. The last time I was here, I believe, was in April, and it was right before Covington Makers Market. So, it was our first event at Real Life Church. We had more than thirty-three vendors, live music, two food trucks, and we estimated about three hundred to four hundred people. By and large, not only the vendors, but the public wanted to know when we were doing it again. We said October 1st, and they said, no, sooner. So, more about that in a minute. In May, we held a small business block party. The first week of May is Small Business, National Small Business Week. So, we held a block party at Cosmic Bottles, Ahern Insurance, and Bar Three to thank our businesses and to show our appreciation for them. We had about fifty guests, and, as I mentioned, the three businesses hosted. June, however, was even busier. We had six events in the month of June. It started with a litter cleanup event on 164th Avenue Southeast. That's the road that we've adopted. We had fifteen volunteers, including a group from Real Life Church. I wanted to make a point to let you know that Jennifer Liden's work is clearly making a big difference. We had fifteen people, and as volunteers like Debbie and her husband will tell you, the street was pretty clean. We didn't have nearly the amount of trash that we had when we'd done the cleanup event there in November, so very impressed with that. Our next event in June was the Joint Chamber Luncheon we do every year with the Maple Valley Black Diamond Chamber. We had a hundred guests. We had... I was going to say, we ran out of... We ran out of food, but it's not a good problem to have, but it was great to see so many people. I think people were just really excited to be out and about and back together, and the weather was nice. Our next event was the Health and Wellness Fair, which was sponsored by MultiCare. We had twenty-four vendors. We had a blood drive. All the slots were filled, so that was a big win. We also did a ready-set-play kickoff. We only had about a hundred attendees, so that wasn't what we were hoping for, but just the blood drive alone was absolutely worth it. And the people that came were engaged. They went... We did a passport program, so they went to all the booths in order to potentially win a prize. It was still a good event. I'm still glad that we did it. The next one was our BNO Open House. Some people here actually were in attendance. We had a really good, engaged dialogue. We had a presentation from the city. We had good comments and crime stats from the police chief. Overall, I think it was a good event, and I'm glad we hosted that as well. And then next, we had two more lanyard pickup events for Ready-Set Play. So far, that program is taking off like crazy, and I think we're going to run out of stuff. We have two prize sponsors, or ten prize sponsors this year, so we've got great prize packs. The kids are all very excited. Everybody's excited about something different. Some... One kid was really excited about the savings account. Somebody else couldn't wait for the Chick-fil-A. So, I guess it just depends on what you're into. So far, we've handed over at least three hundred, or handed out at least three hundred and fifty lanyards. So, we're expecting about two hundred kids to complete the program, but so far, it's very possible we might exceed that. In July and August, those are a little bit slower for us. We're just going to be doing after-hours events. We've decided not to do luncheons. Our normal location for those does golf outings in the summertime, so they're not available to us, and so many people are traveling for vacation and their kids are out of school. We just decided to give ourselves a break, and instead, in August, we are hosting a summer Makers Market. So, we heard what people were saying, and we had an opportunity to host a smaller event, so we're going to do a summer Makers Market, Covington Community Park, on Saturday, August 20th, from 3:00 to 7:00. We're already accepting vendor signups, hoping to have some food trucks and a few more surprises. In September, we are hosting our thirtieth anniversary party, so we are hosting Member September on Thursday, September 8th, at lunchtime. It will be at Real Life Church, and it will be catered by Nana's Southern Kitchen. We are working on getting sponsors so that we can pay for all of our members' lunches that attend, and we're also going to host a membership drive, so we're going to ask all of our members that come to bring a guest that might potentially become a member. In addition to events, there's lots of other things that happen behind the scenes. Membership, of course. I've had more of an opportunity this year to be out and about, so my goal is to visit with a couple of businesses every week with Ready-Set Play and delivering all those materials to the twenty-three businesses that are participating. I've visited lots and lots of businesses in the last few months, which I'm really glad to have a chance to do. We have more new members so far this year than we had all of last year. That's a little slow right now. I'd like to see that improve. But we're gaining a lot of visibility with the community events that we're doing. It also helps fund our operations, so I think it's, you know, a good endeavor all the way around. In terms of the city, last week, we provided two letters of support for the city parks programs, or, excuse me, the city parks, that are looking to make some changes and upgrade. In terms of infrastructure, you may have seen the soft launch of our new logo. We are working this month on our mission and vision to see if they need to be fine-tuned. Our CRM has been in place since April, which has really helped us manage internal operations. It saved me a lot of time, and it's helped me track who I've visited, and so I can follow up with them. We will be launching a new website this summer, so people can more easily register for events. It will also enhance our member directory and create advertising opportunities for our members and possible monetization opportunities for us. So, once again, I want to thank you so much for your support, personally and as a group. You have been great. I really love partnering with the city. We're so grateful to be able to work together, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You know, I just want to thank you for everything you're doing for the chamber and the partnership that you've grown between the chamber and the city, and I've been able to watch that from the outside, but you have just brought a tremendous amount of energy to the community, and it shows with the number of businesses that you've engaged, but your events are always on point and fun and get good turnout. So, I'm just really excited and proud that we've got a great partnership between your organization and the city, the council.
Thank you, Debbie.
Dana, it's always a pleasure hearing from you. Thank you for all that you do, not only for the chamber, but for the community.
Thank you.
Please pass that on to the board, because I know that they do a lot of hard work and all the members.
Absolutely. I couldn't do this without them.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. Next up is Sam Pace with the Seattle King County Realtors with a Realtors article. Sam, welcome tonight. Thank you for being here. Thanks, Krista.
Senator, Mr. Mayor, Member of the Council. You'd like to like me?
Okay.
My name is Sam Pace. I live at 29839, 154th Avenue Southeast, about six minutes back. Five minutes, maybe. I'm a broker with Executive Real Estate, Inc., and I'm here tonight representing the eight thousand Realtors in King County as a contracted advocate with principal responsibility for fourteen jurisdictions from Renton and Tupperwillow South to the Pierce County line. I appreciate the opportunity to address you very briefly. I was hoping to be able to meet with the council in person much earlier, but COVID-related prudence delayed that. I'm very appreciative of Krista and Regan's assistance in allowing me to be on your agenda. I'd like to mention four things very briefly this evening. First, in our association's advocacy to support vibrant community, we endeavor to only take positions or to make statements that we are willing to repeat on the record at a microphone like this one. We can't do that in the same way that we would be saying. The Seattle King County Realtors have been talking and writing about you behind their backs, and so I wanted to come here tonight and provide each of you with a hard copy and verbal testimony affirming on the record what we've been saying and writing about Covington. I have a hard copy for each of you that Krista has passed out, and also a copy for the city clerk, and there's a few additional copies in the back over there on the table in the event any of the other city staff or members of the public are interested in taking a look. At its core, our article regarding Covington, which begins on page six of this edition of our online quarterly publication, Issues and Impacts, and they're paper books, so they're just held in page six, says that the body of work the city council formally adopted last fall regarding the new Form-Based Code, the Infill Exemption Code, the Multifamily Tax Exemption Program, the Technical Implementing Amendments to the Code, and the EIS are, quote, "exemplary leadership to address the housing affordability crisis," end quote. The article also references comments from state officials that we believe are consistent with our own assessment of the city's work. Second, I want to be sure to mention, and I hope that you will understand and forgive me, but this Issues and Impacts publication is a publication by the Realtors written primarily for the real estate industry. I hope you'll understand that's why, rather than including pictures of the city council in this article, we included pictures of two of our members in the article, Covington Planning Commissioner Jennifer Gilbert Smith, who worked on this body of work, and former council member Cocal. We want to encourage our own members to step up to the opportunities to assist cities in these kinds of important work. The work we described and that you completed was an incredibly heavy lift. Most often, staff members in King County's thirty-nine jurisdictions who work on these kinds of projects in the trenches escape recognition, and we know there were many, many people in this city involved in this work, but at the staff level, Ryan was here when the project started and when it concluded, so we made an effort to also mention him last fall when we published this article. Third, things change. Cities do not remain static, frozen in time. They either... I mean, they face new challenges and opportunities on an ongoing basis, and they either step up to those in ways that secure the city's future health and vitality, or they slide into the kinds of decay and erosion that, if left unchecked, eventually leads to blight and decay. As someone who was here at the beginning, when at incorporation and when Pat Sullivan was mayor and who assisted the city in the lengthy process of drafting its first signed code, I'm pleased at how Covington has responded to those challenges and opportunities since incorporation, and I appreciate the thoughtful and collaborative way the council and staff are assessing current challenges, including public safety. The recent body of work, which was approved by the council last fall and which brings me here tonight, is not the first, nor likely the last, example of Covington's regional leadership. So, fourth, in that regard, I just wanted to mention that the Realtors are considering the creation of an additional online quarterly publication loosely inspired by John F., President John F. Kennedy's book that he wrote before he ascended to the presidency, Profiles in Courage. The purpose would be to highlight courageous, exemplary, regional leadership to address housing challenges. We envision stories that put flesh on the bones and even a little grit, even a little grit in the telling, to help people understand not only that the work is hard and not without challenges, but that important progress really is possible. One example in this regard would be the work some cities have done on permit-ready accessory dwelling units, but obviously Covington's massive body of work involving the new Form-Based Code, the Infill Exemption, the Multifamily Tax Exemption, the technical amendments implementing those, as well as the EIS, or something that we would like to feature early on, if a couple of you on the council and on the planning commission and staff would be willing to sit down with us for a few minutes and share a little bit about what you hope to achieve, the bumps on the road, how you overcame those, and how you crafted the path forward to adoption of this initial effort on one of the region's first Form-Based Codes. Speaking of firsts, please allow me to also quickly mention one other item. You may or may not know that I read every single city council agenda for every committee, every planning committee agenda that I can get my hands on every week for every one of the fourteen jurisdictions that I cover. To the best of my recollection, I believe the first formal published draft of a public participation plan, I would just add as a side, the Management Act in R C W 3678, requires early and continuous public participation. There have been some cases about that out of West Seattle that frame that issue. To the best of my recollection, I believe the first formal published draft of the public participation plan state mandated 2024 major updates of local comprehensive plans in those fourteen jurisdictions. Thank you.
Sam, thank you very much for coming tonight. Appreciate you writing that article. Next up is our proclamations for our citizen and honorary citizen of the year, so if council could please join me in front of the dais.
All right. First off, each year, we, as the council, select our citizens and honor our citizens to be here to represent our city for its term and its future, and we're in the process of, not only serving the community, but still within our community. And tonight, I would like to start with our proclamation for our citizens of the year, and these were decided several weeks ago. So, our recipient, our citizen of the year, Deborah Hartzoff. Whereas, since the city's first birthday, the city council has made it its position to select a citizen of the year to honor individuals who have made a difference in our community. And whereas, the city council voted to honor Debbie Hartzoff as Covington Citizen of the Year in 2022 for her dedication and commitment to the community. And whereas Debbie has a huge heart, and her love for Covington is evident in all the ways she contributes to our community, always going above and beyond to help win the game. And whereas Debbie served on the Board of Directors of various organizations in the greater Covington area, actively participates as a member of the Covington Road and Real Life Church, and has volunteered through the chamber to clean, save, welcome the city community. And whereas Debbie has a passion giving back and volunteering, and having an overall positive impact on the Covington community, now therefore, we, the city council of the City of Covington, hereby recognize this Saturday, July 16th, as Deborah Hartzoff Day in the City of Covington, and ask all citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of her contribution and Debbie has given this proclamation. And thank you. Congratulations. And we would like to honor our honorary citizen of the year, so if Justin Vanland please, if you want us up here. Whereas, since the city's first birthday, the city council has made it its position to elect him honorary citizen of the year to honor individuals who have made a difference in our community. And whereas, the city council voted to honor Justin Vanland as Covington Honorary Citizen of the Year in 2022 for his continued dedication to help make Covington a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas, Justin supports the Covington community through many volunteer initiatives, such as the Clean, Safe, Welcome City Committee, which he formed on behalf of the Covington Chamber of Commerce. And whereas, Justin is an ambassador for Covington, always championing Covington brand and volunteering for a variety of causes that directly and positively impact Covington residents and Covington communities. Now therefore, we, the city council of the City of Covington, hereby recognize Sunday, July 17th, as Justin Vanland's Day in the City of Covington, and ask all citizens to join us in this special observance and recognition of his contribution to the community. Justin, thank you very much for all that you do. You are an inspiration to everyone. Justin, we so thank you.
How long do I got? Mayor, member of the city staff, Chief, Dana, I am honored to be here with people. The courage, bravery, and resilience I've seen relating to Covington community has grown in your way. I am humbled to have my little efforts like that. I'm just doing my part. There's a lot of... Thank you. We're so appreciative for everything you do. So, when you say that I'm an inspiration to you, every day, every time you send a photo on Facebook, every time you have a presence, it's really... So, special thank you to everyone here, and I'm looking forward to continuing to partner with Rotary, Chamber, City, everybody to make Covington cleaner, safer, and even more wealthy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will have a fifteen-minute reception for our honorary, honorary citizen of the year and also for our newly appointed council member. I believe we have three of you in the back.
Thank you. Welcome back from our reception for our newly appointed council member, citizen, and honorary citizen of the year.
Mayor, I'm not sure how that works. Um, I thank you, Regan, for being open to our suggestion to give us updates throughout the year. This is, at least from my perspective, exactly what I was expecting. Um, I do want to check in and confirm, even though we have hired, you know, the clean team person, and we have hired the, the community care specialist, that we will be privy to updates on, you know, how they're doing and their impact.
Yeah, of course. Um, I, I put kind of ongoing updates in the weekly update about clean team, some of the work that they're doing. And then, of course, with the community care specialists who will provide.
Perfect.
We want the council to know what that person's doing and the impact they're having, so we'll absolutely do that.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Jennifer. Anybody else have any questions? Regan, thank you very much.
Sure.
Great update, and thank you to you and all the staff that are making this come to fruition. Thank you. Uh, next up is future agenda items. Our next council meeting is on Tuesday, July twenty-sixth. We have council interviews for CEDUS, and our council meeting at seven. Does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda? Seeing nobody raise their hand, um, we can always look at that down the road. And with that, we will move into council staff comments, and we'll start with Chief. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we did a shoplifting emphasis, I think, two days after the last council meeting with Fred Meyer. Uh, Fred Meyer, uh, is one of the local businesses that chooses to partner with us in that endeavor. We prevented a little over three thousand dollars worth of loss for them in about six hours. Uh, we took a few people to jail, one decided to run, um, and fell down, and then the officers caught him, so, uh, good job for them. Uh, and, uh, King Five asked about it, so I did an interview with them on Tuesday. Uh, not my favorite thing to do, but I did it. So, uh, also, we have lost Jay Miller, our, um, our TAC guy that we had, SWAT guy, uh, he was taken by the county for defensive tactics, which allows King County to pick up an additional body in the academy per month. So there was a, um, kind of a staffing issue for the entire King County that should help with that a little bit, but it's our loss in his place right now. We picked up a temporary duty assignment, one of the people on, uh, who just got on their own, uh, who was also part of the shoplifting emphasis, so she's already been here, already participated. Uh, is a very active officer, and I'm looking forward to integrating her into our team. And that's it.
Thank you, Adam. Sean?
Well, both the, uh, we had a shoplifting emphasis, what, four or five months ago? Do you know what the outcome of those cases turned out to be?
I haven't followed up on the specific cases. I know that they were charged.
Okay.
Um, and I know that these ones that we just did were charged.
Okay.
Uh, and our prosecutor's been doing a really good job of pushing this.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thanks, Chief. Ethan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as you know, the summer events are underway, and this weekend is the Covington, is Covington Days and the parade. So I just want to kind of bring attention to that. The weather's looking good, so it should be a, a nice weekend. Um, really, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Uh, Selena?
Hi, good evening, Council and Mayor. Um, I just want to share with you that, um, Dawn and I have been working with a developer, um, on the Covington Commons Project, which is the piece of property that's located in the town center across from the UW Valley Urgent Care. Um, as you know, this property is adjacent to the property that's owned by the city, the old school property. Um, this developer is proposing, um, apartment buildings, garden style, and a, as well as podium up against the street. In an effort to do their development, they have to have a sewer connection that goes from their site out up to a southeast Wax Road. We've evaluated all of the, um, options that they have. Um, one of those options not being utilizing the right-of-way, but rather, they're going to be requesting an easement across the city property. Um, so Dawn and I have been working with them in concert with Regan and Mark to really start to evaluate the public benefits that, you know, granting them this easement, what will they be willing to do, um, to provide public benefit in lieu of that easement? Um, so I'm sharing this with you because this will be coming to you in a future agenda. And, um, just if you kind of catch wind about this conversation out in the public, um, from a development perspective, um, I wanted to give you a heads up. So that's going to be coming to you. There's some really great outcomes, I think, that we've been able to negotiate with them, but ultimately, that will be your decision as the council, so more to come on that.
Great. Thank you, Selena. Casey?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, I wanted to mention a little bit about our commission meeting, as I know you all really enjoyed, but, uh, to know, uh, where that commission came from last fall to now is really quite exceptional. And, uh, a real kind of coming together, putting some things aside that didn't matter, and narrowing in, kind of locking in on a focus. So that was really, um, wonderful, uh, to see that. I'm grateful they were able to share that with council. Uh, also, just wanted to share, um, our population, if anyone was, uh, curious. Um, we, from the Office of Financial Management in the state, they, uh, put out the population numbers. It's now twenty-one thousand, two hundred, uh, which is an increase of four hundred and twenty-three in the last two years. So, um, a couple of years before that, we had some pretty high, um, you know, it was around a thousand, but, um, so a little telling after in COVID, but, uh, going back up again, so, uh, that's what our current population is. I look forward to seeing all of it.
Thank you, Regan. Uh, Mark?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we have an executive session this evening to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one, one, zero, sub one, sub little G. And other than that, I have no other report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Krista?
I would just like to congratulate our new council member, Debbie Hartzock, as well as congratulate you as our citizen of the year. And I'd like to congratulate Justin Van Landshu as our honorary citizen of the year. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Christina?
Yes, uh, I, I just want to echo what everyone has just said. Uh, our equity, um, cultural and social justice commission was, I feel like they just propelled, wow. And I propelled too, but they propelled in, in a short time, but, but it was, it's so nice to see them hone in on a vision, um, that's coming to life. Um, super proud of our police officers in the force, and to see that Covington is setting examples. I heard even on social media, I saw so many replies about, hey, good job, I wish our city would do this. I wish we would do it here. I wish other cities would get interested in that, and so, um, hats off to them. I think it's an awesome way to set an example. Big congratulations, Justin. So deserved. Um, and Debbie too, and welcome to the team. You, I feel like you were the missing piece that just makes the puzzle so perfect. Um, also, I just feel super, super blessed. I know maybe it wouldn't be the coolest thing to spend your evening, birthday evening, in a council meeting, but I don't think I'd want to be anywhere else. This is, this is home. And I love our people. I love our council. I love our community. And we'll celebrate eventually with the family, but this is awesome, and I, I can easily say that I have become so much more rich in the relationships that, um, just benefited my life so much over the last few years, so, thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Good to be back.
Uh, looking forward to Covington Days. It's going to be fantastic, and I don't think it's going to be a scorcher either. It sounds like the weather will be temperate, thankfully, um, and getting out and, and getting a chance to connect with residents in a different way. Um, it's in a fun, fun atmosphere. And again, I have to echo, uh, we did a cleanup on Saturday and our, and our civic club, and it looked miles and miles better than it did back in March. And, um, just kudos to Jennifer and the Safe Welcome Team, or Safe Welcome Committee as well, because it's making a difference. A little incrementally, it's making a big difference.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Yeah, I'd just say, uh, congratulations to Jason and Debbie, and welcome aboard, or Justin, sorry. And welcome aboard. Glad to have you. Thanks.
Thank you. Debbie?
Well, I would just like to thank everyone for this just tremendous support in, in getting on-boarded and getting ready to lunch. Um, Regan, your staff has just been amazing. I told you this before, but the positive energy in this organization is palpable, and, um, everyone has just been bending over backwards to help me get on-boarded. Um, Chief Easterbrook, congratulations again on your, um, on your new promotion. Yes. And, and also, on the, um, shoplifting sting, um, uh, Krista was right, there was a lot, or Christina was right, there was a lot of, um, good energy going on through Facebook, but, and then we were all saying, you know, don't bring your crime here. I think that's what we're sending the message, and I think that's, I hope we can stick with that, because I think it's a good message to send. So, thank you for what you and your team are doing.
Thank you, Debbie. Jennifer?
Hello, hello. Um, congratulations and welcome, Debbie. A big night for you. And I missed our, like, first-person reception forever, so if there was cake, I don't want to know. Just don't tell. I don't want to know. I'm, like, sitting here with no snacks in a hotel room. Um, and congratulations to both, uh, you, Debbie, and Justin. I can't wait to see you up at the front of the parade. That is seriously my favorite, favorite, favorite part of Covington Days. And I'm really looking forward to, uh, being home later this week, so I can see you all at the festivities.
Thank you, Jennifer. Joe?
Uh, thank you. First, uh, welcome to your first meeting as a council member, Debbie. And Justin, congratulations. And, uh, so I had Krista send this out. It is the skip agenda. I'm asking for council's input. On Friday, we are going to be discussing the, uh, skip advisory board compensation proposal. Skip went through and it got used six different groups for peer models. And I have to say, some of these pay, uh, three times as much as I make an hour at my regular job. So if anyone knows how I can get on these boards, that'd be great. Um, but they are, uh, asking that we authorize a seventy-five dollar per meeting for the advisory board members for stipends. I am asking council for, uh, their input. You all heard my big feelings on this at our last meeting, but I will say that I feel like seventy-five dollars is excessive when they meet once a month. So I will take it into advisement, anything council may have.
Um, I have one question. How long are the meetings that these advisory members would, is it the same meeting you're in?
No, they meet on, uh, like, the first Wednesday of the month. I was, they meet for about two hours a month, roughly. The meeting can go a little bit over, but the schedule is two hours.
So seventy-five, so it's thirty-seven, fifteen hours, what they would be making for that?
Yeah.
Does council have any questions for Joe on this, or comments? Beth?
So is it going to be set that they, they get that stipend if they make the meeting, and then if they don't? Or is it going to be flat? And then, because they were talking about it not applying to everybody, just depending on?
Uh, the see, I know it's on here. Participation in the skip advisory board is voluntary and is acknowledged that for some members, time and engagement with the board is categorized as work time through an employer, while others' board membership is entirely on their own time. With this, uh, spectrum of experiences in mind, blah, 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 uh, the stipend for advisory board meetings and serving as a liaison, we consider present at a meeting if they attend the majority of the meeting. So if they're only there for sixty-one minutes, they'll get the whole stipend if they have to, instead of out of a hundred and twenty.
But if they, if they don't, if they call out for the meeting, don't go at all?
Correct.
Debbie?
Question. Apologies that I, I don't know what this advisory board is or what they do.
So skip is the South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership. Covington is on the executive board. I serve as the representative to skip. Uh, the advisory board is a citizens, uh, or is people outside of the, out of there who either work, have worked in some form of housing, uh, to help with homelessness, or have had lived experience, or, uh, just are something that they've, uh, dabbled in in the past, and they're, uh, appointed by the executive board. They're, they're volunteers. They're like our commissions.
And are they professionals in their field?
Uh, yes.
When is the meeting held? Is it during the day or is it in the evening?
Or
The advisory?
That's in the evening.
So it's outside of their work hours?
Should be.
Depends on what they have for a job.
So the, the majority of, the majority of them, uh, are in a job that would be Monday through Friday, nine, uh, your typical nine to five.
So do they, uh, oh, go ahead, Sean.
Uh, Jennifer's got it.
Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, um, you know, when this came up, I remember this last year, actually, my first reaction is, oh, they're volunteers. Very, very similar to, to what Joe is saying. However, uh, these are not professionals. These are people with lived experience that are offering advice on homeless solutions. That is a different perspective than most, if not all of us, sitting at the dais have. Also, the comment outside of working hours, like, we have no idea if that's accurate. Um, I know lots of people that work at retail and everything else, that, that would absolutely not be the case. Um, childcare, gas, there are lots of obstacles. I personally don't have a problem with it. I'm, I, my gut reaction a year ago was, yes, absolutely. But again, that's very much my perspective, my life, um, having seen it talked about in various forums and boards and whatnot. Um, the last year, I can definitely see it as an attempt to break down a barrier, and why not give it a whirl?
I, I do want to give one clarification. All of the people on the board currently, on the advisory board currently, are all either planners or work, some of them work with King County in the housing consortium. Consortium, yeah, consortium, thank you. And some of them work for the county directly. Most of them, I, I see your face, Beth, and that's the same reaction I had. Um, but none of, none of the ones currently have had lived experience in homeless, as homeless or, uh, in that area. They have just been in the field of working for this area.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Joe, that, um, clarification. I have similar experience to Jennifer when I first heard this. I was like, yeah, no, volunteers shouldn't be, be getting compensated. But over the last year, working with ecology, we're actually moving more in this direction as well. The term is actually kind of reimbursing them for some of their expenses to participate. And in some instances, there are barriers. So like Jennifer mentioned, uh, travel costs with gasoline getting as expensive as it is, it could be difficult for some people. Childcare, uh, meals, um, it, it's interesting. I, you often don't see your own, um, situation. You know, it's well, I'll speak for myself. I'm in a, you know, a good situation where I have my evenings off, and I can afford to spend time at, at the public meetings and, um, but there are people that, that that is a barrier for them. So, um, I guess, need to hear more about the people that are on there. But if there are people with lived experiences, can bring a special, um, uh, understanding to the problem, and there's a barrier to that, which is, uh, the cost associated with it, I think we should be looking to on how we can, you know, alleviate that.
I, I will add one thing. This board has never met in person. They've only ever met virtually.
Okay.
So I, I will add that into this conversation for your thoughts.
So at one point, it was discussed that this, um, payment or whatever it's going to be listed as was only going to be the, for those that were lived experience and, um, not able to make it there, they have a bus fare. But if this is for professionals, everybody's getting this, or is it just the?
So, so the exact, they have the option to opt out of this payment. But, so consistent with best practices and peer models, the skip staff work group and advisory board recommends adopting a stipend of seventy-five dollars per meeting for eligible advisory board members. Stipends are voluntary, and advisory board members can choose to opt out of receiving the stipend.
I, uh, you said eligible, so I have experience, know what eligible means for that.
That I
Not everyone is getting it, but
I would like to know too, but it is not stated in there.
So that's a question I would have. Who's eligible? Is it professionals that? Which I'd be surprised, sorry. I'd be surprised if it is, but if it is everyone, then I think that's, that's not the intent of providing reimbursement for people that have an obstacle. Uh, if it's, if that's not the case, then, yeah, it's just for eligible people with lived experience, then I, I think we should support it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I very specifically remember Angela saying that it wouldn't apply, that they would have to be eligible, right? Like what we're talking about, so I think we really need to see that spelled out, and what it, who would be eligible.
So this is on the agenda for tomorrow night to vote on?
Oh, Friday.
Or Friday night. Um, I, I know the other cities are going to want to vote on it, because it's been discussed for a while. And like Beth said, Angela did bring this to us, saying that it was going to be for just those that were eligible, the lived experience, those that are having difficulties making it. So if that's what the explanation for eligibility means and not the professionals, then I'm for it. But if it includes everybody, I'm not for paying that. Because I don't, when I go to all my night meetings, I don't get PSRC and everything else.
I, I just, I can, can I get a nod heads that that's what everyone else agrees with?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay. That being said, uh,
Jennifer raised her hand also.
Yep. I saw. Thank you, Jennifer.
All right.
Um, uh, I have picked tomorrow. The only action item we really have is to, uh, put new people on a couple of the regional committees. So other than that, uh, that's going to be a simple meeting, but it's going to be really our first meeting without Deanna. So that'll be different, uh, but I have faith in the staff. And then Covington Days. I am excited for Covington Days. I can only be there Saturday, so I'm going to be, I'm going to spend my entire day at Covington Days. And I, my family already understands this, but, uh, you know, at Cornucopia Days, the Kent City Council is in the parade. They're riding through on golf carts. I'm not saying we have to have a golf cart. It'd be really cool, because I don't want to, I'm kind of lazy and I like driving golf carts. Uh, but, and we can have a golf cart race between the council members. But maybe next year, we can plan on having council in the parade itself as a way to be there, instead of, you know, just standing on the sidelines. Because I, I think it'd be cool for us to be in the parade. As much as I don't like parades, I would gladly be in it for showing, showing our solidarity to everybody. That is all I have.
Thank you, Joe. I opted out of being in the parade because the mayor was, when Margaret was there, and they all the mayor's previous, so I enjoy being the emcee, so I am going to be doing that again this year. Um, but I like your idea with council members, because that way, um, the residents can, uh, see our council members even more.
You should do a conga line after the parade.
Oh, that'll, that'll be fun in my booth. Um, so has everybody signed up, worked with Carla to sign up for a spot, um, for this weekend to fill the city booth? Um, I'm looking forward to having Jennifer, Beth, and Laura Morrissey as our judges this year. That will be exciting. Um, be up front and center, so you can see everybody. The, um, congratulations again, Debbie, on our honorary citizen and as our newly appointed council member. And congratulations to you, Justin, as our honorary citizen. Both, uh, very well deserved. Uh, SCA, I will be meeting next week with the board. Charis Consulting, that Charis or Car, Charis, um, is working diligently to find us. I believe the advertisements went out last week, or they went out this week to, um, for the position to, uh, replace Deanna. I know that will be a hard, uh, position to fill, but, um, we are moving forward with that. And I believe that's all I have for tonight. I'm just excited for Covington Days in person. So, oh, and don't forget Ice Cream Social. You won't be there, Joe, but, um, on Sunday at two P M. If any of you can make it, we're handing out ice cream for, um, everybody that's, uh, at Covington Days, uh, two o'clock. Carla will make sure that we're, I think Carla will be running that, so we, as a council, do all the handing out of the ice cream, so. So, um, with that, we will move into our second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate, and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council tonight? Sam?
About six minutes that way. Um, I appreciate what the chief had to say about the emphasis, um, related to the shoplifting. Um, I saw some of the pictures of the merchandise that we covered, and it wasn't all food. But I think it's, um, a couple, I, I would offer a couple of ideas for, for your consideration, for the people, for the, for the event, for, for whatever value, if any, might have. Um, I was formerly, as some of you know, uh, in the city attorney's office in Springfield, Oregon, and, um, also, um, did municipal offer other agencies as outside counsel. Our, our firm did, we had four attorneys in the firm. We had a little bit of a similar situation in Springfield. One of the things that we did is we quit reporting crimes. And we started reporting the daylight out of arrests. And the public perception about whether or not folks wanted to do crime in that city changed fairly quickly over about the course of six months. I half jokingly suggested to one of the council members, um, the evening of the B N O tax forum, that maybe, um, they would put up a, uh, a reader board sign that says, uh, two hundred and eighty-seven people arrested for shoplifting. This is not what you want to do, like, something like that. I just, I gave away, then, I'm not sure that's the reputation that you want. But, but, but maybe somebody could hand out leaflets in the, uh, in the evening, which I, I don't know. Um, but at any rate, I think that, that focusing on arrests can be helpful. The other thing is, I saw the, I saw the, uh, I believe one or two pictures of the recovered merchandise that was sitting in shopping carts that were all, all stacked together, and it wasn't all food. But, um, one of the members of the board of the chamber who was here for the B N O tax discussion, uh, his family's in the grocery business, and the margins there are like maybe two percent, maybe three percent. So if that had been three thousand dollars worth of food on a two percent margin, that's the equivalent of stealing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a firm's profit in one weekend. Firms can't survive with that happening. And so I applaud the city on the work they're doing, work that you're leading. Um, but I think it's also important for, for the larger community to understand and appreciate that it may only look like it's three thousand bucks, only three thousand bucks. But at a two percent profit margin, when we go through that line, the prices have got to change to reflect recovery of a hundred and fifty thousand bucks. Multiply that by fifty-two weeks a year. We're only doing this once. Um, and, and we can see why it is such a, a really difficult situation for our real retailers who happen to be in markets where they only make one or two or three percent on each item that's sold, and they have to sell that same item twenty-five times a year in order to make enough to make a living at it. Uh, it's important work that you're doing, Chief, with your folks, and I applaud the city for And I applaud the city for stepping up to that challenge, because for the affected businesses, it is, it is a big piece of survival.
Thank you, Sam. Is anybody else in the audience wishing to address council? All right, seeing nobody else, public comment period is closed. We will move into executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to RCW 42 dot 30 dot 110 subsection 1 subsection G for approximately, what, 30 minutes, Regan?
I think that would be plenty.
Okay, 30 minutes, at which time, when executive session is concluded, there will be no further business. Thank you.
Mayor, can you please state the time that you expect to return?
We won't be returning, council meeting's over.
I need it for the recording. You'll need to come back and then you could adjourn, I believe, right?
Yes, 8:57.
Thank you.
Good evening, we have left our executive session. No further action is being taken tonight. This meeting is adjourned at 8:57. Thank you all very much.